Hey, everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for March 1st, 2023. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The lively youth tonight. Welcome, everyone. I'll turn it over to Brooke.
Certainly. Our vision, the vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools without regard to race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
Great, thank you. And do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Nope, seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to special recognitions.
Wonderful, Madam Chair, thank you. So this evening, we have Ariana Perlez, a seventh-grade student at Auburn Middle School. She received an honorable mention in this year's Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth poster project. The theme this year is "The Earth Loves You, Love It Back." There were close to 350 entries, and her poster stood out from a large group. We have her here this evening, as well as Margie Daniels, the Executive Director at the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, and Tony Parentozzi, the President of the Board of Directors, here to tell us more. And come on up to the podium. Ariana, would you like to come up too and stand with them?
Hello.
We can slide that over.
Oh, thank you.
There we go, perfect.
I'm Margie Daniels, the Executive Director of Massachusetts Partnership for Youth. It's such an honor and pleasure to be here in front of the Auburn School Committee. We have such good news about your district and about a specific student, because, as your superintendent said, we had literally hundreds of applicants this year for our poster project. And out of this poster about planting a tree, one of the most outstanding. We have a pair of judges that includes superintendents, school principals, law enforcement. We have some mental health workers. And also our teachers. The art teachers are very important in this process, and they absolutely love your poster. So we're very happy to be here tonight to thank you and appreciate you. And I have a certificate honoring you. And we also have a gift for you. So I'd like to give you... It's an Amazon gift certificate, in case anyone's wondering what it is.
That brought a smile.
I used to always give coloring books and pencils, and one of the younger members of my staff said, "Come on, Margie, how about an Amazon gift certificate?" And every place I go, it seems to bring smiles. So anyway, congratulations. I wish you the very best success with your talents in the future. And I'm hoping maybe we could get a picture?
Certainly.
Can we do that?
And we also have a copy of the...
Oh, fantastic.
How awesome.
That's awesome.
And we have to take the poster back, because I have to show them at our board meeting.
Okay.
After that, I could return it to you, but I have to...
That would be fabulous.
Yeah, maybe I'll see you down at MASSSS this summer.
Yes.
Perfect.
I'll bring it with me.
Yeah, so would you like a... The picture of the three of you? You'd want it with the board? Who would you like?
Whatever you... whatever you would like.
Okay, maybe we can come right up here? Come on, board members. Come on. Come on.
Thank you so much.
Some of the cities and stuff really want to plant trees. They've cut down some of them, I guess.
Just a quick comment. Thank you for being so warm and welcoming to us. It's just such a pleasure to be here, so thank you.
Oh, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, and thank you for coming. Ariana, you are also free to go if you'd like.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. And we'd like to thank Ms. Berg for her help in all of this.
Yes, thank you.
Right, they mentioned... Yeah. Thank you, Neil. Fabulous. All right, great. Okay, next, we also... We don't have the students here this evening, but wanted to share that in December of '21, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education approved a pilot Student Achievement Award Program, designed to recognize high-achieving, high-need students, students with disabilities, English learners, and low-income students who scored exceeding expectations in English Language Arts and/or Math in any grade level on the 2022 MCAS. The program also recognizes high-need students who are high achievers on the MCAS ALT, a portfolio option for students with the most significant disabilities. Listed below are the number of students who are recognized with this student achievement, and the award packets contained a certificate of achievement, letter of recognition, a $20 Target gift card, and ideas to help families support their students' continued high achievement. Swanson Road had seven students scoring as such. Auburn Middle School had 12, and Auburn High School had eight. And that's a very big accomplishment, and we're very proud of all of them. So just wanted to take a moment to recognize that.
Wow, that is awesome. Good for them. All right, congrats to all those students. Let's see, I'll seek approval for the minutes for February 15th, 2023?
I'll make a motion to approve the February 15th, 2023 minutes.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we do have Bella here, and I believe Ally is...
Yeah, okay, we go. So you get the student... The stupid... The student representative goes to board.
Okay, Ma.
Thank you, thank you.
Your eyes red as mine.
So my notes are somewhat slim today, mostly because we were on vacation all of last week, so I do apologize for that. We are almost two-thirds done with the school year, and everyone is really excited about the ending of the try in only a couple of weeks. Faculty and staff are really pushing information reminders about course registrations at this time for the next school year. Power School portals were open this morning for students to select their classes and see what teachers have recommended them for. And final registrations and completed AP forms will be due on the 16th. Unfortunately, also with the ending of the trimester comes finals and most of our core classes, which is never fun, but a necessary evil, I guess. They will be given on the 16th and 17th. It will last two days. And more exciting news, this month is the Park City Utah Ski Trip. For all of those who signed up, I have a few friends going, and they are very excited. At 6:00 PM tomorrow night, the induction ceremony for new members of National Honor Society will take place to celebrate both our incoming students and the seniors who will be leaving us. And finally, Mr. Auburn is next Thursday. Tickets will be sold at the door for $10.
Excellent. I thought you had a lot.
Thank you, I did my best.
That was not stupid, that was awesome.
Ally, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. Thankfully, the technology is working better for me today, so I'll touch on some of the things that I was going to cover at last meeting that I wasn't able to ultimately present. So firstly, Mr. Parnards' two AP Government classes competed at the We the People competition at the Edward M. Kennedy Institute for the U.S. Senate. So this was back in the final weekend of January. And the Auburn Gray team placed second in the competition. So that was an overall very good experience and gave the GovKids exposure, and they could play for their own. Additionally, the annual Quebec City trip took place that weekend. And then this... The weekend, the week before February break, we had Winter Carnival, which was all... Which was the annual competition between classes hosted by Student Council. So there was school days, games, and challenges, and a hallway decorating competition. So that was very exciting for lots of the students, and then the seniors ended up winning that competition. And now after break, just like Isabella was saying, we're doing lots of course registration for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and preparing for finals for the end of the trimester. And then just the exciting events. We have Park City Utah, like she mentioned, and also Mr. Auburn coming up. So lots of exciting things to come the next couple of weeks.
Great. Lots going on. Yeah. Great. All right, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move right on to the superintendent's report.
All right, and as we do at the beginning of each meeting, we begin with our spotlight on students. This evening, we have some students and staff from Packerchog Elementary School to talk about their kindergarten 100-day project. So Mrs. Stanek is here, Mrs. Elaine, Mrs. Fritz, Mrs. Kennedy. And we have students Maverick Abdrazak, Aviana Germano, Jack Soderberg, and Savannah Tobin.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us this evening. And today, I am really excited, excuse me, to be here with my kindergarten students and teachers and to share their amazing 100-day projects. So we have with us Aviana Germano from Mrs. Fritz's class, Maverick Abdrazak from Mrs. Elaine's class, Jack Soderberg from Mrs. Leflam's class, and Savannah Tobin from Mrs. Kennedy's class. And they are going to share a little bit with each of you.
We celebrated our 100-day of school in February. Everybody in kindergarten made a project at home showing with 100 items.
We invited our families to celebrate our 100-day projects. It was really fun.
We also had a goal of collecting 100... 100 items for personal... For Auburn youth and family services. We wanted to donate personal care items to people in need in our community.
Thank you.
We are happy. We are happy to say that we collected over 200 items to donate.
That's fantastic.
I made a poster showing 100 core memories I have made in kindergarten.
Oh, that's so cute.
I made a Mario shirt with 100 coins.
Oh, handsome.
This is my project. I made 100 flowers out of lollipops.
I made ice cream with 100 sprinkles.
Yeah.
Nice. Wow. To celebrate.
We always remind them how we are 100 days smarter on that day. So we've got less than 80 now to go.
And you're on TV.
Very exciting.
Yeah. Can you just look at me so I can take your picture with your projects there?
That's awesome.
Oh, cute. Smile. Nice. Good job.
Good job, guys. So cute.
Oh, that's awesome.
Cute. We did a fish before I... Bella. Thank you. Thank you, Bella. Thank you, good night. So cute. Congratulations again. Thank you. Great projects. Can I see your T-shirt up close? Shirt. Can I see? It's so cute. I used to play Mario Brothers. That is so cute. Oh, wow. Nice job, Jen. Thank you. Very exciting. Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Thanks for coming. Thank you so much. Awesome. It's so cute.
It's always fun. It's awesome. Best part of school committee.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep.
I think we should put the kids at the end, so we have something to let fellas... Now there's no one here. We're in Plaza.
Oh, man, that's good stuff.
They're so cute.
Yeah, they are. Okay, we will move on to the boring stuff. I want to say stupid stuff, but it's not. So bad.
Y'all knew that.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, unfinished business. As we do normally, and this has to happen each quarter in your packet, you'll find the second-quarter report from the Southern Wester County Collaborative. You can review it. It is required by law that we share this with the... Each school committee gets a copy of this report each quarter. So if you have any questions, I'm certainly able to answer them. It talks about enrollment, that kind of thing. But that's something that we do typically, so... Does it say how many Auburn kids are there?
That's husband and...
It does. Actually, it's not in this... It's not in the final report. We get a separate report of that each year, so we monitor that. Yeah, they're actually... They've done a remarkable job. They've really grown that program. And it's Arnold Lundwall is now the director there, and he's done a terrific job of really getting some top-notch staff and services for kids. So it's run very well. That was the first services we ever had, I think, way back when, when I was teaching. Correct. Yeah. It really was good. Yeah, yeah. So what do you think, 10, less? Less than 10. I think it was... I want to say eight. I don't want... Don't quote me on that, but I think it was above that. Okay. Yeah. All right. Next item is the strategic plan summary. Again, this is just for your information. You graciously approved the strategic plan at our last meeting. I've taken that information and made it into this summary sheet, which have the big categories along with the next big three items. That'll be addressed in each of those categories. This is something that will have made into, not huge posters, I don't think, but some bigger things that can be hung in schools, sheets like this that can be given to teachers. We can post this on our website along with the full plan. Just another way to give people a snapshot of what we're working on and where we're headed. So again, just a summary sheet, but I thought I would share it with you since this is still fresh in our minds, so... Thank you. I think it looks great.
It does, I agree.
Yeah, it looks nice. Oftentimes, this is more digestible than the big document.
Yeah.
You need the big document, but people aren't going to read the big document. So hopefully, that will help us too. Well, very well done. Okay. And my final item this evening is that we... I did have an initial... Mrs. Wispicki and I had an initial budget meeting with Town Manager Kaznovich. At this time, it's a little precarious because of the change in state administration. There are a lot of budget numbers that are not yet available. But just wanted to give you an update that we will be preparing for a presentation to finance in the near future. So more to come on that. All righty. And we don't have a date on those state numbers, right? No, we don't. So everything's... Yeah. Okay. All right, we'll move on to new business. And we're going to move on to teaching and learning in the next... All right.
No adjectives, Madam Chair.
The spectacular report is coming up.
Just a quick update. So Greg Walton, Director of Pupil Services, and I have been working throughout the year with support, as you can imagine, from Dr. Chamberlain on increasing the number of trainers that we have for our behavior management and de-escalation. So in the past, we've only had one person who was able to train and make sure that we had certified people in each building around de-escalation. And so we actually were able to increase that to three this year. So it gives us a lot... Much greater flexibility throughout the year to make sure that, you know, our ABAs and select staff members in each building are trained in our... And we use CPI, which is Crisis Prevention Institute, is the organization that we use. In addition, the thing that's been really exciting, and the three trainers have divided up the buildings and traveled to each building and spoken to each... The staff at each building around just some general verbal strategies and techniques that they can use with students in their classroom to potentially de-escalate or just use more neutral language. And that's been really well received. The trainers have all been asking for feedback afterwards, and a lot of the feedback that they've gotten is, "We would like more of this. This has been really helpful to think about this." And to imagine students and the backgrounds and the varying things that they bring into the classroom and making sure that we're all being receptive to that. So I want to share that. It's been a really positive step that we've taken this year.
Great. That is, that's awesome. I will tell you, I went to one of the presentations at the high school, and it's just such a great visual I have to share with you. They gave everyone a balloon and talked about the things that can kind of get a kid in a place that they're not really ready to learn, right? So they said, "Imagine yourself when things don't go well in the morning. The line is really long at Dunkin' Donuts, and you're frustrated and blow into the balloon. You get to work, and you find out that, you know, you have to cover another class, blow into the balloon." And it kind of... It demonstrated how frustrations can build, right? And then they also talked about, "But the teacher next door brought you a coffee, let out a little bit of air, right? One of your students thanked you for the help they gave you. You gave them the day before on their homework, let out a little bit of air." And so the impact that positive feedback can have in de-escalating some of those things... It was at the high school, and the teachers absolutely loved it because it just so simply and clearly made the point of what frustration can do and make you feel, and then what some interventions can do to diminish that. I just thought the folks that put that programming together along with Alan and Greg just did a great job. Great job.
Yeah, that's great. My balloon's huge all the time.
That's a stupid balloon.
The three people that are trained, are those our own staff?
They are, yes.
Excellent. All right, great. Thank you to those staff workers.
Sam Spiezio.
Yep.
Who's at BCBA.
Okay.
Captain Moriarty.
Guidance at Bryn Mawr.
Yep. And then Jess Pitzel.
Oh, Jess Pitzel. Pitzel is right, AP at Swanson. So she's kind of been our main trainer. But this year, we sent two more for that. So it's been really great. The feedback was tremendous.
Awesome.
Great. Thank you to them for stepping up too. Yes. It's great. All right. That's it? That's all you have?
That's it.
All right. It's good, good stuff. All right. All right, Cecilia, we'll turn it over to you for business and financial.
Business, financial report. Good evening, everyone. In your packet, I've provided a year-to-date budget report dated February 21st for your review along with the listing of transfers, as usual. Some between the same series and others between different series, which I need your approval for. And I'd be happy to answer any of the... Any questions relating to those items.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated February 21st, 2023, as presented by the business manager. I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. It's a vote.
So next, I have the FY24 French River Oil bid results. We were hoping these would come in soon because, you know, I'm pleading for the budget. But once again, we participated in the French River Collaborative Oil bid for the upcoming 2324 school year with the assistance of Competitive Energy. The two companies were namely Peterson Oil and Dennis Burke that responded to the bid. The bid was opened on February 15th. The group met via Zoom and discussed the different... The two options that we had. And it was unanimously decided to move forward as a group with the ULSHO as opposed to the ULSHO-10 oil and awarded to Dennis Burke. So I'll just... The Ultra... ULSHO is ultra-low sulfur heating oil. The plain without the 10, the one that has 10 is like a 10... No more than 10% biofuel. And the plain ULSHO is... Has at least 5%. But... So we all agreed to go with the lower amount of biofuel because a lot of the boilers are having issues with the higher levels of biofuel. So as a group, we decided. And the lowest, most responsive bidder for the price was $3.0442 per gallon. So each district will need to accept the bid and sign a contract with Dennis Burke, which I have on my desk to be signed. But I wanted to get your approval and your permission to move forward on that and accept that as the 2324 school year bid for oil.
Thanks, ma'am. Now, through the chair. What if a district does not approve of it? Does that then put us all out?
No. Pretty much everybody that was there, it's like they came to the meeting. It was agreed that we would all move forward that way. And we do it as a group. It's a collaborative. So we put all our amount of oil that we're going to need together. And that was one of the issues that we had. If you looked at the information that I put in your packet, they gave us the two different options. And we just had a discussion about some districts wanting to go with the regular plain, USLHO, and then some wanting to go with 10 because they say it's better going with the higher biofuel. But a lot of districts have had trouble with their boilers. And, you know, in speaking with Mr. Fahy, he was in agreement that we should stay with the lower level, so. But we had decided, like, kind of, some people wanted to go either way, but then we all decided as a group. And the way, when we do it, it's the people that come to the meeting that decide for the group overall. And if you don't attend the meeting or don't put in your opinion, then it's the group that decides, and that's how we move forward, so. And I think mostly it's like, it's agreed upon, but it's a standard procedure that we accepted as, as the committee, you know, in the school department, so. So you're our authorizing department, so.
Okay. Any more questions or comments?
I just have one, looking at this. It says the Auburn Public Schools, Bryn Mawr School, and Auburn Public Schools, Randall. Is that the only two places in our school system that get the soil?
Yes, yes, because...
Others use gas, propane?
Well, Swanson Road currently is oil. But if you remember, we're going, we're fixing that this summer. We'll be replacing it in with propane. The middle school has propane. And the, what is it? The high school has, they have oil too, so. No, I'm sorry, they have gas. Sorry, I apologize. No, the high school has natural gas.
And Pakichag.
Pakichag also has natural gas. We were hoping to get natural gas for Swanson Road, but it wasn't an option. So we've decided to go with propane.
Okay.
And so those are only two. So we reduced our amount. Normally, we'd have a higher amount for oil, but we reduced that with just the two buildings.
Well, that's good.
Miss speaking there.
We're good, Mia.
Yeah.
So I have a question. If it's for Randall Building, are we splitting that cost with the fire department, or is it...
Currently, we pay for the heating of the building in general, but they pay for the water and the sewer. So we kind of balance that off. It's a collaborative approach.
Agreed even a long time ago.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Oh, we need to...
Yes, approve it.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the FY24 French River Collaborative Oil bid and award the contract to Dennis K. Burke for heating oil for Bryn Mawr School and the Central Administration Building at a rate of 3.0442 cents per gallon for the 20232024 school year.
I'll second.
Are you all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, I have the school department warrant articles. We're coming to that time of annual town meeting on May 2nd. And we've been asked by the Board of Selectmen had voted to open the warrant process, and they're going to close it on March 6. I put together the standard warrant articles. If you see in your packet, we're going forward again with $125,000 for Medicaid receipts. And the other three have blank spaces right now. The first one of those is the School Gymnasium Trust. We wait to get the money, what's going to be allotted to us through the town, and the town will give us that amount. The other two, McKinney-Vento and Foster Care, are for amounts that we've already previously paid last year. And we wait to hear how much percentage of reimbursement we will receive on those. So those were our four items, and they're pretty standard. But I need your approval so we could send those over to the town.
I'll make a motion to approve the school department warrant articles for the May 2nd, 2023 annual town meeting as presented by the business manager.
Can I get a second?
Oh, I have questions, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Okay, we can, are there questions before we... Nope. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't get us.
Okay, and the last thing I have is, back when we first, when we negotiated our last transportation contract, we had bid it for three years with the option to extend for year FY24 and FY25. In this current state of things, a lot of the bids are coming in in double-digit number percentage increases. So I took a look at what was offered. They gave us options for year '24 and '25, and I put kind of a comparison sheet in your packet. But they gave us, the owner of AA Transportation, when he bid, gave us our original bid for '24 and '25, which were pretty high increases in my book. So I went back and I tried to negotiate with him, and we went back and forth a couple times. But I was able to reduce the increase from '23 to '24 as an overall 4% across the board. And then on increasing from '24 to '25 at an overall 5% across the board, which brings us to a total of 9%. And if you look at what their original bid was for, it was anywhere between 11.45 on one category up to as high as 15.99%. So I feel like we did pretty well in negotiating. But, you know, something to think about down the road as Dr. Chamberlain and I have discussed, that busing costs are going up, and after these two years that we've locked in for, we'll need to go back out in FY24, starting for FY26. So we're going to need to look at maybe making sure we have enough more money in our budget for that because there definitely will be increases. I looked at, some are like 10% increases for people that are going out to bid right now, up to... I even saw one that was as high as a 33% increase, which is huge.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, boy.
So, but, and I looked also at our numbers, like our, what we're paying, and we're in a good range compared to what other people are paying out there. They're a lot higher, so.
I want to say too, AA Transportation has been really good to work with. They're really responsive. No bus company is perfect, and we have our, you know, things when things happen. But they're responsive, and they're helpful,